Nambabae ka na naman. Ano ba 'to bakit?
Ang gabi ka rin presidente. Momayali ako. Di rin, di rin ko. Pagalaw magasasalipla siya, lilian. Tubig na 'yan.
Usapan na.
Anga ko babagay ticket.
Hindi, kasi nung... Di pa 'yun ang nasakaming kontroba.
Pero ngayon hindi. Parang sinasabi niya kanina, ito 'yung mga legitimate. Malakpa ka na.
Dalaan ko 'yung mga legitimate.
Dali.
So ikaw do'so, bilang legitimate.
Pero makita maayos na. Kaya't kuha ko ni Bree, 'yung kuha ko ni Bree. Tignan si Janice, Gabe. Pareh. Friend.
Session resume. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker. I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the secretary general be directed to read the titles of bills, resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection, the chair hears none. Motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions.
National Reference of Business Resolutions. House Resolution Number 555 directing the committees on public order and safety and human rights with the former as the lead committee to investigate on the census screening of Mayor David Navarro of the municipality of Clareem, Misamis Occidental, in Sebus City, while under police custody, Representative Ovaminal Pichai Delmar Canama.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 556 directing the committee on waste and means to inquire on an operated smuggling of goods into the country by unscrupulous operators of customs-minded warehouses to the detriment of local manufacturers and producers in the Philippine economy, Representative Pichai.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 557. A resolution commending the honorable Speaker Alan Peter Caetano as Chair of Philippine Sea Games Organizing Committee and the participants, organizers, and staff for their significant contribution to the success of the 2019 Southeast Asian Games opening, Representative Kagas.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 558. Urging the House Committee on Energy and the House Committee on National Defense and Security to conduct an investigation in aid of legislation on the economic and national security implications over the 40% Chinese capital ownership and control of the national great corporation of the Philippines, Representative Sartate and Gaite.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 559. Congratulating commending the remarkable leadership of the honorable House Speaker Alan Peter Compañero Escayetano, Chairperson of the Philippines Philippine Southeast Asian Games Organizing Committee and the honorable Abraham Bambol and Tolentino, President of the Philippine Olympic Committee and the rest of the members of the PISJOC and POC organizing committees for the successful opening of the 30th Southeast Asian Games, Representative Suntay.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 560. Expressing profound sympathy and condolences of the House to the very family of the late Milagrosa Milatan, Representative De Los Santos.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 561. Commending and recognizing Filipina scientist Jenny Ann Pareto for her extraordinary contribution to marine scientific research with her discovery of Apolaki Caldera in the Philippine rice, Representative Velasco.
To the committee on science and technology.
House Resolution Number 562. Commending and congratulating the Iglesia de Cristo and the Department of Public Works and Highways for opening the Ciutat de Victoria interchange over past bids and bypassed robe in time for the opening ceremony of the 30th Southeast Asian Games on November 30, 2019, Representative Castillo.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 563. Urging the Committee on Metro Manila Development and the Committee on Transportation to explore the viability of reviving the organized bus route system in Epifania de los Santos Avenue, Representative Castillo.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 564. Commending the Pads Adaptive Dragon Boat Racing Team for winning four gold medals and setting a new world record at the recently concluded 40th International Dragon Boat Federation World Championship, Representative C. Alvarado.
To the committee on youth and sports development.
House Resolution Number 566. Directing the Committee on Human Rights and Committee on Justice to conduct an investigation in aid of legislation on the escalating trend of systematic repression that is generating political prisoners in greater number despite the constitutional ban on political imprisonment and political persecution, Representatives Zarate, Gaite, Culiamat, Castro, France, and Elago.
To the committee on rules.
House Resolution Number 568. Congratulating the gold medal awardees of the 30th Southeast Asian Games and granting additional incentives from the leaders and members of the House of Representatives in the 18th Congress. Representatives Caetano, Alan Peter, Romaldes, Ferdinand, Duterte, Pichai, Tolentino, and Martinez.
To the committee on rules.
House Joint Resolution Number 25. Joint Resolution mandating the provision of guidelines on the eradication and prevention of outbreak of African swine fever and other potential transboundary animal diseases in the country, Representative Yap Victor.
To the committee on agriculture and food.
Communications. Letter dated 6 November 2019. Governor Dolore MPa, PhD, Vice President of Luzon South League of the Provinces of the Philippines, Office of the Governor, Province of Oriental Mindoro, submitting their quarterly fiscal and financial report of operations for the quarter ending September 30, 2019, on the LGSF CMGP to the provinces of road repair, rehabilitation, and improvement.
To the committee on appropriations.
Letter dated November 18, 2019, of Cesar Ardulay, Commissioner, BIRDOF, submitting the Bureau's consolidated monthly report of disbursement for the month of October 2019.
To the committee on appropriations.
Letters dated 25 and 26 of November 2019 of Janice G. Isonzales, Deputy Director, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, BSP, furnishing the house with duly certified and authenticated BSP issuances.
To the committee on banks and financial intermediaries.
A legacy of discipline and reform tour of duty report for April 19, 2019, to October 14, 2019, of Philippine General Oscar David Albayal, the Chief PNP.
To the committee on public order and safety.
Committee reports. Reports Number 114 and 119 of the Committee on Local Government on House Bill Number 5682 and 5692.
To the committee on rules.
Report Number 115 of the Committee on Justice on House Bill Number 4553.
To the committee on rules.
Report Number 116 of the Committee on Natural Resources on House Bill Number 1230.
To the committee on rules.
Report Number 117 of the Special Committee on Sustainable Development Goals on House Resolution Number 565.
To the committee on rules.
Report Number 118 of the Committee on Labor and Employment on House Resolution Number 66.
To the committee on rules.
Report Number 120 of the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Appropriations on House Bill Number 5697.
To the committee on rules.
Report Number 121 of the Committee on Higher and Technical Education on House Bill Number 5698.
To the committee on rules.
Report Number 122 on the Committee on People's Participation on House Resolution 567.
To the committee on rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker. I move we recognize the honorable Lito Chenza of Partners Buay for his personal collective privilege. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Lito Chenza is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Salamat po, Mr. Majority Leader. I rise on a question of personal and collective concern. And I'd like to state very loud and clear the message that you would like to the people.
Honorable Chenza, what is the nature of the collective privilege?
This is regarding the statement of the president that he issued last night. Very strong words on the problem of water distributed by the concessioners.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Napakalaga po na sinabi na ating pangulo. Na kanyang hayagang hinarap ang problema. At sinabi niya na 'yung dalawang water concessioners ay dapat lang mataku sa taong bayan. Sapagkat hinayaan niyang ilabas ang kanya sa mga loob sa ginagawa ng dalawang dambo halang ito. They were able to get a ruling from Singapore declaring that the Philippines is at default and should pay them billions of pesos. 7.4 billion pesos, to be exact. Mr. Presiding Officer. This now affects the whole nation, not only us Metro Manilaans provided water by this exclusive monopoly. Ngayon, lahat ng mga Pilipino kayumanay galing sa Luzon, Visayas Mindanao, magbabayad kayo dahil dito sa desisyon ito. Na nagkulang daw ating pamahalaan sapagkat sila raway nalulugi ay hindi sila makapataas ng presyo. Ang sagot ng pangulo ay simple. Kayo ay nalulugi negosyo niyo yan, problema niyo yan. Bakit kapag babayaran ang bawat mamamayan sa inyong pagkukulang? And Mr. Speaker. I'd like to stress what the president has already uncovered. That these two concessioners have not delivered their part of the concession. They committed a wastewater treating facility from 1997, on day one of the contract with the government. And in that same action, they were able to collect from the consumer money representing 20% of our water bill they add on, which they call sewage service. And then realizing that it was becoming publicly known of a scandalous shortcoming and violation of the contract, they changed it to environmental fee. But in effect, it's still the same 20% add-on to our water bill. Kumolekta sila na kumolekta ng daan daang bilyong piso sa mga mamamayan na hindi naman nila ginawa 'yung bahagi ng kanilang concession. They have never started even putting up an effective wastewater treating facility so that water from our households, wastewater coming from our poso negro should be treated accordingly to a central treating facility before the water is allowed to go back to Laguna di Baie, Pasig River, and Manila Bay. Mr. Speaker. Our water bodies have already decayed to a point practically of no return. Manila Bay is now poisonous. Laguna di Baie is suffering the same decay and pollution. Because wastewater from our poso negro goes straight to these water bodies and not to a treatment plant which was supposed to have been delivered from 1997. Nokamay ko'y pinalad na mahirang sa Department of Environment. Isa ito sa mga nakita kong hayagang paglabad sa batas ng ating bansa. Immediately, we wanted to action and we filed cases against them. Penalized them 100,000 a day for noncompliance. They questioned it in court, they lost. They elevated it to the Court of Appeals, they lost. They elevated it to the Supreme Court. On August of this year, the Supreme Court finally decided on a unanimous decision that they are supposed to pay a billion pesos each. Para makabalik sila sa ating lahat, nagdimaanda sila sa Singapore. Bakit hindi dito sa Pilipinas sila magdimaanda? They filed a case in Singapore and of course they won their case because they chose the venue. Pinagbabayad ngayon ang gobyerno ng 7 bilyong piso. Yan ang tingin ko ko'y nakagalit sa ating pangulo. And therefore, we stand today in support of the president. Akuman ay nagkulang sa umpisa na hindi wala na lahat na sinasabi ng pangulo. Sa araw na ito, nakayuhupo ang inyong linggo. Sumasaludo ng dalawang kamay kay Pangulong Rodrigo Duterte sa kanyang katapatan sa ating bandila at katapatan sa ating mga mamamayan. Hindi niya hinayaang magtagumpay ang hayop na pantarambo ng itong dalawang concessioner na ito. And we ought to support the president here. We must require these two water concessioners to produce all the records because they claim that they were losing money and they were not able to collect enough to sustain their operation. Yun ang kanilang ginamit sa Singapore. I have here the record of the Philippine Stock Exchange. They have been making hundreds of billions of pesos at the expense of all of us Filipinos. And they have just proven themselves again. Creating a storyline that would justify them to collect 7 billion pesos again from the government. Every year, they declare a net income of billions of pesos. Every year, they issue stock dividends, billions of pesos. Sam po nila hinuway argumento na sila'y natatalo, sila'y nalulugi. And more than that is what I have mentioned. They have not delivered the other half of their commitment to produce a wastewater treatment plant so that our water will become clean once again. At this point in time, Mr. President, I was almost losing hope. Para ba kang nananawagan tayo sa pader? Sapagkat wala pong nangyayari dito sa Kongreso, anumang panawagan ang ating gawin. Ayaw nagsalita na ang ating pangulo. At ang sisigilin ngayon ay hindi lamang kami. Hundi lahat kayo, kung san man kayo nagagaling, magbabayad kayo kung papayagan ang pangulo, manahigan desisyon ng Singapore. So we have to stand up as one. At this point in time, I challenge the Speaker of the House. Take action on this matter. You lead, we will follow. We cannot stay quiet. We have to act on this concession agreement to behave destructive or constructive. Itupuway serbisyo o perwisyo. Itupuway nakakatulong at ginagawa tayong lahat para tayong mga timawa at pulubi. Kaya mga minamahal kong mga kasamahan, respectfully requesting you honorable members of Congress, let us get the speaker to act on this. And we must move as one, as representatives of the people and duly elected members of our electorate. We sit here because the people sent us here. It behoves us. And now that the challenges we impose to us, we should act accordingly to these contracts signed in 1997. And at this point in time, proving themselves nothing but money-making schemes to get the hard-earned money from our pockets. Panahon na opang itong mga kontatang ito, I maabrogay kung kinakailangan. Nung ang tubig ay nasa kamay ng gobyerno, naiinom natin ang tubig galing sa poso. Naiinom natin ang tubig galing diretsos sa grip. Nung magbula 'yung hinawakan nila, ang distribution ng tubig naging marubina ang uri ng ating iniinom. Kaya tayo imiinom na lang ng mineral water. So this is a time, Mr. Speaker, that the Congress of the Philippines should really take note of our duties and sworn responsibilities. Pagtanggul natin ang ating bansa, pagtanggul natin ang ating mga mamamayan sa pang-aapi. This is nothing but a money-making venture. And we also urge the members of Congress to take a serious look at privatization of utilities whenever brought to us. Utilities should never be privatized anymore. One of the impositions of the foreign powers we embraced to make the Filipinos impoverished forever. Kailangan tubig kuryente ay galing sa pamahalaan as a public service and not as a profit-motivated venture. This is the time where the Filipinos can liberate themselves from the chains, chains that were put on us. Inali tayo at hindi tayo pinagbigyan na makabangon kayo ng money. Itunam pagkakataon, not the next administration, but this administration because we have a leader who is decisive, who has the courage, pero pu'san tunay na pagkalalake at 'yan ang ating hinahangaan. And again, I will repeat what I said. Speaker Caetano, you are now on the spot. You show your mettle as a leader. We, members of Congress, will act as one to support you and the president. Maraming maraming salamat po. Ang kinabukasan ng ating bansa ay nakasalalay dito sa ating kusapingito. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to express the sentiments of each and every citizen. And this is an opportunity for us to wake up to reality. Wala pong tutulong sa atin hundi tayo na mismo. Salamat po. Patnabayan tayo na pag-oon na nagbibigay sa atin lahat ang pagkakataon ito. Mabuhay ang Pilipinas.
Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, we note the manifestation of the honorable Chenza. Mr. Speaker. Before we move to the unfinished business, I move that we suspend sessions for a while to allow the committee to organize themselves before we begin consideration of the said readings. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker. I move that we refer the pre-speech of the honorable Chenza to the committee on rules or appropriate action. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection, the chair hears none. Motion approved.
Motion approved. The privileged speech of Honorable Lito Achenza is hereby referred to the committee rules. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, under the today's business, I move we consider House Bill 5509 under Committee Report 82 and direct the Secretary-General to read the title of the bill. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved. The Secretary-General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 5509, an act lowering the optimal retirement age of government workers, uh, an act lowering the optional retirement age of government workers from sixty years to fifty-six years, amending for the purpose Section thirteen dash eight of Republic Act Number eight-two-nine-one, otherwise known as the Government Service Insurance System Act of nineteen ninety-seven.
Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move we recognize the Honorable Castro to deliver her sponsorship speech for the said measure. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Honorable Castro is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this afternoon, the Committee on Government Enterprise and Privatization is happily to submit for your consideration a bill that will amend the optional retirement age of government workers from sixty years old to fifty-six years old. The bill is motivated by humanitarian and rational considerations. We in the committee have agreed that workers in the government who have served at the minimum fifteen years in the government service and are already fifty-six years old should be given the option to terminate their employment with entitlement to old-age pension for life. In addition to the thousands of petitions urging this measure since the last two Congresses until now, the authors are personally aware that many workers in the government are no longer able to work diligently, not because they have become incompetent or lazy, but because like many Filipinos, government workers included, they are already suffering from failing health due to work-related and other sources of stress which have also affected their emotional and mental states. Work-related stressors come in the form of failure to adapt to changing working conditions, such as mechanization, computerization, and additional workloads, not directly related to their professions and training without any corresponding additional remunerations. Certain work environments such as nepotism and professionalism, favoritism, and politics within the office involving promotions and assignment of stations are also major stressors for government workers. Unfortunately, these sick and tired workers, some even reported to the office carrying oxygen tanks or filing extended unpaid leave and would be unable to apply for retirement due to permanent disability because doctors could not find any physical manifestations or signs and symptoms for their conditions. Thus, they are forced to hold on their jobs because separation from government service before sixty years of age will mean immediate loss of income. On the GSIS position, that the life of the GSIS retirement fund will reduce by at least four years if this bill is adopted. Our deliberation also found out that the GSIS study assumes that one hundred percent of the government workers who will reach fifty-six years old of age will actually retire. The GSIS conclusion is improbable because the fact is, and as admitted by the GSIS, the average age of retirement in the government service until the present sixty years of optional retirement law is actually sixty-two years of age. We all know that government workers who reach sixty years of age are physically fit and highly motivated due to favorable working conditions, do not avail of the early retirement option. We see no reason, Mr. Speaker, why this trend would change if we allow the lowering of the optional retirement age to fifty-six, especially that government pay is now comparable, if not better for some positions to those in the private sector. Additionally, contrary to the fear of the government service will suffer if the lower of the retirement age, we agree with the argument posited by the authors that this measure is beneficial to the government service. If we allow our sick or retired senior workers to retire early, it will enable government offices to employ young, competent, and qualified workers that will bring fresh ideas, are computer literate and trained to compete in the international labor market. Considering the unemployment rate among our college graduates is currently quite high, this bill will lure our young and brilliant graduates to serve the country in the prime instead of pushing them to bring their skills abroad by aspiring as OFWs. Mr. Speaker and dear colleagues, we reiterate that we are positively responding to thousands of petitions from employee groups all over the country, foremost of which are our public school teachers, and we urge this Congress to respond positively as well. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpret the sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mrs. Speaker, there be no committee amendments. I move that we now proceed to consider the individual amendments. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mrs. Speaker, there be no member who wishes to introduce any individual amendments. I move that we close the period of individual amendments. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mrs. Speaker, there be no individual amendments. I move that we close the period of individual amendments. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading House Bill Number 5509 under Committee Report eighty-two. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 5509 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we elect the following members to the respective committees. On the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, as member, the Honorable Ben Kanama. For the Committee on Energy, as member, the Honorable Ben Kanama and the Honorable Sharon Garin. To the Committee on Agriculture and Food, as member, the Honorable Ben Kanama and the Honorable Sharon Garin. To the Committee on Government Organization, as member, the Honorable Ben Kanama. To the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development, as member, the Honorable Eric Pineda. To the Committee on Public Accounts, as member, the Honorable Eric Pineda and the Honorable Jose Padianos. To the Committee on Trade and Industry, as member, the Honorable Ben Kanama and the Honorable Sharon Garin. To the Committee on Transportation, as member, the Honorable Ben Kanama. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend sessions. I so move.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of the honorable Angel Joseph Di Cabatbat of Magasa Saka Partilist. They are the Villarosa Farmers Association of the Municipality of Licap, Nueva Ecija, headed by Mr. Benito C. Barayuga, Franco Bonilla, Valentino Gaspar, Nummer Javier, Eresay Labrador, Ramil Labrador, Marisa Pumaras, Danilo Ramos, and Dominador Valdez.
To the guest of Representative Cabatbat, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move we reconsider House Bill Number seventy-eight under Committee Report Number five and direct the Secretary-General to read the title of the bill. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved. The Secretary-General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number seventy-eight, an act providing for the definition of public utility further amending for the purpose Commonwealth Act Number one-four-six, otherwise known as the Public Service Act, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mrs. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that we are under the period of interpolation. To continue with their sponsorship, may we recognize the Honorable Sharon Garin. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Honorable Sharon Garin is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mrs. Speaker, to interpolate this said measure, I move we recognize the Honorable Dante Marcoletta. Deputy Speaker Dante Marcoletta. I so move, Mrs. Speaker.
Honorable Dante Marcoletta is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, House Bill Number seventy-eight, among others, is an act providing for the definition of public utility. This is correct.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, in fact, during the interpolation of Representative Abante, as borne out by TSN of the Plenary Session on November five, twenty nineteen, the good sponsor said this, and I quote, "The gist of this amendment is by having a definition, by setting the parameters on how to identify a certain industry as public utility." So we have incorporated that, meaning the definition of public utility in the bill. This is correct.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. It's an assessment of all the decisions of the Supreme Court as well as the international resources that we have collected. And it is by collating all these opinions that we have come up with the four categories to define what is public utility. Mr. Speaker.
In the same transcript, the good sponsor also said that she only included three of the definite public utilities because she was sure that those three industries, namely, distribution and transmission of electricity and the pipeline distribution of water and sewerage pipeline systems, will always qualify as public utilities because they are natural monopolies, among other factors. Do you also confirm having said this, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. It is a list of what we believe are qualified as public utilities as well as in consideration also of national security interest in which electricity and water is essential to our communities and to the country. So we have provided definite four or three or four number of utilities that should be qualified as public. But this does not prevent Congress from any future amendment of the said proposal.
Finally, Mr. Speaker, in the transcript, the same transcript, the good sponsor... Finally, Mr. Speaker, in the transcript, the same transcript, the good sponsor said that the proponents have tried to follow all the jurisprudence as well as concom, including the discussion in the House, and all this, I quote, were put in the amendment as the parameters or the criteria on how to identify an industry as a public utility. Can you also confirm these statements attributed to you, Madam Sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, the qualification of the three industries as public utilities in the amendment are based on the situation how it is now. They are considered as natural monopolies and they qualify under the four criteria that we have set forth, but it does not prevent Congress from any changes from the list, but it is also based on...
But Madam Sponsor, you said you have tried to follow all the jurisprudence.
Correct, Mr. Speaker, it's a...we followed the definition, not the list. We followed what are the principles behind qualifying an industry to become a public utility, Mr. Speaker.
In claiming to have followed all the jurisprudence to establish the parameters or criteria in identifying a public utility, had the good sponsor read the case of JG Summit Holdings versus Court of Appeals?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
In JG Summit Holdings versus Court of Appeals, GR Number 124293, September 24, 2003, the Supreme Court defined public utility as a business or service engaged in regularly supplying the public with some commodity or service of public consequence such as electricity, gas, water, transportation, telephone or telegraph service. Will you kindly note, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, that in defining a public utility, the Supreme Court also provided situational examples, but the enumeration is not exclusive, meaning to say there could be more as long as the industry falls within the definition of public utility as a business or service engaged in regularly applying or supplying the public with some commodity or service of public consequence. This is quite clear.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is one of the jurisprudence that we have taken into consideration, but that's not the only jurisprudence that we have taken into consideration, but that is correct, Mr. Speaker.
You may have noted too, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, that in the above-mentioned jurisprudence, the Supreme Court already included transportation, telephone and telegraph service among the examples of public utility. This is correct, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
With your affirmative answers, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, will it be safe to assume that contrary to your earlier claim, you failed to follow all the jurisprudence, particularly the case of JG Summit Holdings Incorporated?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I affirm that I have answered in affirming the statements of the good interpolator, but also we have taken into consideration various other jurisprudence as well as resources from international as well as Philippine resources into which we have incorporated four criteria, not just the JG Summit decision, Mr. Speaker.
In the same case, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, the Supreme Court also enumerated the conditions with which a business or industry may be considered a public utility. Number one, the facility must be necessary for the maintenance of life and occupation of the residence. Question, is a public transport or telephone service company necessary for the maintenance of life and occupation of the residence?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Two, as its name indicates, the term public utility implies public use and service to the public. Question, does a public transport or telephone service imply public use and service to the public?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Three, the principal determinative characteristics of a public utility is that of service to or readiness to serve an indefinite public or portion thereof which has a legal right to demand and receive its services or commodities. Question, does a public transport or telephone service company possess the character of readiness to serve the public who in turn has the legal right to demand their services?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it depends on the authority or the franchise that they have received, but yes, in general, all these companies are obliged to do so, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, with all the affirmative answers of the good sponsor, to each of the three conditionalities that will describe a public utility, will she now agree that a public transport and a telephone service company are and without that, public utilities?
Sir Speaker, there's a fourth qualification in which the public service should be a natural monopoly, which are not met by telecommunications as well as transportation, Mr. Speaker, because telecommunications, you have an option today as how it is now, you have an option of going for landline or through cellphone or in fact through the internet, as well as you have an option of different companies providing such services. In transportation, you have an option of going by land, by sea or by air, and also different companies are offering different services, Mr. Speaker.
As a matter of fact, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, still part of your reply during the interpolation of Representative Abante was the allegation that you only included three definitive public utilities because you were sure that those three industries will always qualify as public utilities because they are natural monopolies.
That's correct.
Let me repeat that, because they are natural monopolies. Question, what is your legal basis that natural monopolies will always qualify as public utilities?
On the basis of the Constitutional Commission deliberations as well as in the Supreme Court, as well as international resources, a natural public utility has always been defined as one of the elements of such as being a natural monopoly, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with the indulgence of the distinguished sponsor and the honorable interpolator, I move that we temporarily suspend consideration of House Bill Number 78 under Committee Report Number Five to give way to the calling of the role. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There are no objection. The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Abante, Abaya, Abellano, Advincula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amanty Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragonés, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatzing, Balindong, Banyas Negrales, Barba, Barbers, Paronda, Barzaga, Bascuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Yason, Biliones, Pirón, Bolilia, Bondok, Wardado, Bravo, Rosas, Bulot, Bustos, Cabat Bat, Cabochan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter Compañero, Cayetano María La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizaldi, Co Wango, Coliantes, Trisólogo, Kuah, Corisma, Cueva, Culiamat, Nagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermita, Bohain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estralla, Ferreyñas Ria, Ferreyñas Rudy Caesar, Fernández, Fernando, Per Juliet, Per Luis, Flores, Ponguan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Puente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, García José Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalyan, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Carlo, Gorseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Arresco, Hataman, Hernández, Reddy, Hofer, Alus Jos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Leetchon, Legarda, Lim, Limkaitchong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Bagundadato, Marcoletta, Mariano Hernández, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Motividad Nagano, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Negrales Jerko, Negrales Juan Fidel, Dolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Huaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwano Disson, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rojello, Padgiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirasato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarberia, Sacaluran, Salceda, Salimbagon, Sano, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmento, Saulug, Savelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sinzuat, Swansing Estridita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Tambut, Tehada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tianco, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Totor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Nabya, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Pal Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suárez, Villa Rica, Villalago, Yap Eric, Yap Totor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate, Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 185 members responded to the call.
With 185 members responding to the call, the Chair hereby declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the honorable Atienza. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Atienza is hereby recognized.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Sabipuna Secretary at Marantay, 185 present. And bilang punamin, I went around and counted one by one. There are only 85 on the floor. So I don't know why we would like to add 100 more than what we see and who are participating in today's session. Ano po ba ang tunay na dahilan? Dahil hindi po kami makapapayag na magdiklaran ang 185, or there are only 85.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the majority joins the distinguished Atienza in making sure that there's a quorum. When it is established, we must have a quorum. That's why, Mr. Speaker, his representation made sure that we are able to explain the numbers. 12 are in the CA, 3 are in official foreign travel, which they are deemed present, 33 are on local official business, and 17 are in the North Zone Growth Quadrangle Committee, a total of 65, Mr. Speaker. Though they are not here, they are counted as present. Furthermore, Mr. Speaker, there are others who come and go, who went and gone, they passed by during the roll call, and then probably they're in the lounge or in their offices. So, Mr. Speaker, the Secretary says that there is 185, which is well above the quorum number, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker. Majority Leader. We would like to agree with you, we would like to help you out on your extended addition of what we do not see on the floor. But on the other hand, no matter how much we stretch our imagination, you claim to have 65 attending official business, which we doubt, because we have sent people around, there are no more committee meetings going on. But I'd like to take that as your word. 65 are still in the committee meeting. 65 plus 85 is 150, not 185. So therefore, we will sit short of a quorum. We continue to question the quorum, even with the manifestation, the Majority Leader, that 65 are officially engaged at this point.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we note the clear manifestation and the concern of the honorable Atienza. However, Mr. Speaker, I believe that there is a need to stand by the attendance roll call of the Secretary General, but if the...if the Atienza would permit, we would suspend sessions first, we can explain to him in private the numbers and where they are. I so move, Mr. Speaker, to suspend sessions for a while.
Session suspended. Session resumed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move we reconsider House Bill Number 78, Committee Report Number 5, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 78, an act providing for the definition of public utility, further amending for the Purpose Commonwealth Act Number 146, otherwise known as the Public Service Act as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we suspend sessions for a minute. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 78, Committee Report Number 5. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, in behalf of the majority, we would like to elect the Honorable Tyrone Agabas as member of the Committee on Games and Amusement, also Congressman Jojo Lara, and Congressman Monmon Gico as members of the Committee on Games and Amusement. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate has passed with amendments House Bill Number 5437 on extending the availability of the 2019 appropriations for maintenance and other operating expenses and capital outlays to December 31, 2020. We have been advised furthermore that the authors of the said House Bill have no objections to the amendments introduced there too by the Senate. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 5437. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Lolita Karen Javier, Honorable Noel M. Sia, ABC President Lapaz Leite, Mayor Michael Dragon Javier of Javier Leite, Mrs. Risha Javier, and Mr. Julian Javier.
To the guest of Representative Lolita Javier, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Representative Carl Nicolás C. Carey of Fifth District of Leite, and Representative Florencio Ginwell of Anwarai Partelist. They are from the municipality of Javier Province of Leite, Mayor Michael Dragon Javier, Vice Mayor Emma M. Abueva, SB Members Gilbert M. Lanooy, Roldán Meras, José Wurly C. Kumla, Amado S. Moreno Jr., Schubert A. Riniós, Marino S. Merillo, Stephen Mark I. Papalid, Ereberta R. Ponse, ABC President Romeo Malinau, SK Fed Jerome Kumla, and Delita A. Kumla.
To the guest of Representative Carl Carey and the Partelist Anwarai, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Joseph Jojo Lara of the Third District of Kagayan. They are the Global Emergency Medical Registry headed by the President Mr. Rodery Corawan, Maria Elena Sagulili, Jonette Claros, and Mr. Romeo Balisi.
To the guest of Representative Jojo Lara, please rise. We recognize, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Virilio S. Laxson of Manila Teachers Partelist, Director Bazuri Badsetseg, Director of Ministry of Food, Agriculture, and Light Industry of the Republic of Mongolia, Ms. Zula Orgadol, founder and CEO of Doing Business Asia Alliance, and Mr. Robin Michael García, founder and Chief Executive Officer of Warwick and Rochester.
To the guest of Representative Virilio Laxson, please rise. We recognize, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Benvenido Benny M. Abante Jr., our Minority Leader of the Sixth District of Manila. District One Angelo Paika, District Two Vincent Lloyd Nahé, District Three Romero Valdez, District Four Jean-Louis Tolentino, District Five Erica May Doton, District Six Janiella Carol Torres, with the assistance of their advisor Christian George Epi and PDO Karen R. Verano.
To the guest of Representative Benny Abante, our Minority Leader, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we nominate and elect the following members to the following committees on behalf of the majority, namely Congressman Ace Barberz and Congressman J.J. Suárez as Vice Chairpersons of Committee on Public Accounts, as well as Congressman Mike Defensor as Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Dangerous Drugs. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move we resume consideration of House Bill Number 78, Committee Report Number 5, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of said bill. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 78, an act providing for the definition of public utility, further amending for the Purpose Commonwealth Act Number 146, otherwise known as the Public Service Act as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the said bill is that we are under the period of interpolations. With this, I again move we recognize the Honorable Garin to continue her sponsorship of the said measure, and again recognize the distinguished Deputy Speaker, the Honorable Marcoleta, to continue his interpolation. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Sharon Garin is recognized. Likewise, Honorable Dante Marcoleta, our Deputy Speaker, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Madam Sponsor, we left at the question whether or not there is a legal basis that natural monopolies will always qualify as public utilities. Your answer is, to my interpretation, there was none. In all the jurisprudence that you claim to have followed, did the Supreme Court rule to the effect that natural monopolies are sure candidates for public utilities?
Mr. Speaker, and this was also cited in the Supreme Court case in Batangas Transportation versus Orlanas. The policy of regulation upon which our present Public Utility Commission plan is based and which tends to go away with competition among public utilities as they are natural monopolies. And also in JG Summit citing Corpus Juris Secondum, a public utility has a monopoly, or a virtual monopoly, in providing essential services to the public at large. There are many jurisprudence as well as schools of thought that qualifies a certain industry based on natural monopolies to be public utility, Mr. Speaker. This is based on deliberations of the CONCOM as well as the Supreme Court and luminaries, legal luminaries that we have in the Philippines as well as outside the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
But, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, the question tries to elicit is that whether or not there is a jurisprudence. Would the Supreme Court categorically and directly rule that natural monopolies are public utilities? Is there?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, and in fact, not only jurisprudence as well as deliberations in Constitutional Commission in which Monsod stated precisely the nature of a public utility is that it is a natural monopoly. Otherwise, it would be too expensive for the country and for the consumers. That is a quote from the records of the 1986 Constitutional Commission. And added to that are the decisions in the Batangas Transportation as well as in the JG Summit. It is, this has been mentioned in such readings as well as decisions, Mr. Speaker.
A natural monopoly exists due to high startup cost or powerful economies of scale of conducting a business in a specific industry. It can arise in industries that require unicromaterials, technology, or similar factors to operate. Am I correct, Madam Sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this is, a natural monopoly has a definite definition in terms of our economic experts.
Globe Telecom and PLDT Smart are natural monopolies, aren't they?
No, Mr. Speaker. They are not natural monopolies because there are many players as well as many options for the consumers.
But we just define what a natural monopoly is. High startup cost, powerful economies of scale, conducting business in a specific industry. This is Globe Telecom and PLDT Smart. That being the definition, they qualify as natural monopolies, wouldn't they? Like Mainilad and Manila Water, they are natural monopolies. No one in a position to undertake operations as big as that. So, on the basis of that definition, they qualify as monopolies. What about a seaport, an airport? They too qualify as natural monopolies, can they be? Madam Speaker, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, a natural monopoly exists by the nature of the industry. A natural monopoly exists where costs are minimized by concentrating production in a single firm. If, for the indulgence of the good interpreter, a natural monopoly exists where costs are minimized by concentrating production in a single firm. In these cases, firms can change the monopoly price to the detriment of consumer welfare. These concerns are eliminated or mitigated where natural monopoly does not exist. The market is contestable or substitutes exist. The same way as in transportation. There is intermodal competition in which you can go by land, by sea, or by air. But also there are many players in the air transportation as well as in the sea transportation, land transportation, Mr. Speaker.
In effect, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, you are saying that as long as an industry or an enterprise fall under the definition of a national monopoly, it can be enumerated also under the proposed bill as a public utility, is it not? Like a seaport, like an airport service.
Sir Speaker, not only a natural monopoly, but also to comply with it with the other three criteria that we have set forth in this proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
All right, modern examples of natural monopolies are media platforms, search engines, search engines, and online retailing service. Facebook, Google, Amazon have built natural monopolies for various online services due in large part to first mover advantages, network effects, and natural economies of scale involved with handling large quantities of data and information. As natural monopolies, will you not add these types of industries to the three public utilities enumerated in the proposed bill, Madam Sponsor?
Sir Speaker, these are natural monopolies in a sense that it is by the nature of they conduct their business or the nature of how the market is, but it is by the nature of the industry. Examples of industries that are no longer natural monopolies include cellular telephone networks, toll, and local telephone services, land transportation, air transportation, maritime transportation, airports, supply electricity, and to a lesser extent railway transportation. It's, a natural monopoly exists where costs are minimized by concentrating production in a single term. This is by the nature of the industry, not dictated by the market or how the industry players are conducting their business in the industry, Mr. Speaker.
During the interpolation of Representative Suntay, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, you disagreed with this view that the proposed definition of public utility in the bill, coupled with definite enumeration of only three industries thereunder, will necessarily restrict what public utility should be or should not be. You even allayed these fears by saying, then in fact, we have left it open for other industries to be qualified as public utility by allowing NEDA to recommend to Congress if there is a need to add another industry as public utility, saying further that the list is not static but can change over time. Will you confirm these statements, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, but just to clarify, the list is not the definition. The list of the electricity and water is not the definition. The definition are the four parameters that we have set in the proposal in which an industry can be qualified as a public utility when there is regular supply and directly transmits and distributes, when there is a natural monopoly where there is a commodity of service is necessary for the maintenance of life and occupation of the public, and there is an obligation to provide adequate service. These are the four criterias that we have set. This is the definition. The list is not the definition, but the four criteria is how we define public utility, and all these four criteria have to be met by a particular utility in order for it to be considered as public utility. That does not mean that water and electricity are the only public utilities that we have, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Sponsor, if it is your position that NEDA can recommend to Congress if there is a need to add or remove a public utility from that definition, will it be correct to assume that there will be two possibilities or incursions into the power of Congress to legislate? Number one, the requirement of NEDA's recommendation before Congress can act, and number two, the provision in the proposed bill on the criteria for public utility to which the future Congress must conform. This is your position?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Speaker, in order for any other industry to be considered a public utility, hence, subject to the constitutional restrictions, the NEDA has to assess each and every public service in order for it to be able to recommend to Congress, and Congress for it to decide upon the recommendation of NEDA if such industry is a public utility or not, Mr. Speaker.
But if the criteria for amendment of the list of public utility will be restricted by NEDA's recommendation in consultation with the PCC, why is there still a need to provide a list in the first place? Can we not just use the bill's list as typical examples of what public utility is, like what the Supreme Court did in JG Summit Holdings?
Because, Mr. Speaker, based on the four criteria that we have set in the proposed amendment, all these four industries do meet the four criteria, but we are aware that the situation now might be different in the future because of technology, because of international influence as well as what can happen in our country. We have laid it open for NEDA, for the endorsement of NEDA to the Congress, for them to add more industries as public utilities, Mr. Speaker.
Are you saying, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, that it is legally tenable for Congress to adopt the criteria provided under Section 13, Letter D, Paragraph 2, to bind future Congresses in identifying public utilities? I was asking whether your position is that it is legally tenable for Congress to adopt the criteria provided under Section 13, Letter D, Paragraph 2, to bind future Congresses in identifying public utilities?
Mr. Speaker, yes, Mr. Speaker, the Congress has the power and the duty as well as the authority to do so, but this does not prevent the future Congress from changing the proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
In the TSN of September 24, 2019, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, you articulated part of the bill's explanatory note in arguing, and I quote, "The times are changing, there is globalization, there are technology, innovation, and we have to consider that what is public utility 20 years ago might not be public utility now, or what is public utility now might just become public utility in the future." So we have given criteria for Congress to determine what is public utility which will fit during the time and which Congress. Would you confirm these statements, Madam Sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, because we have seen how the decisions have been derived in the Supreme Court as well as the deliberations in the Constitutional Commission, that definitions have been steady. In fact, it is the list, the examples that they have cited, that has been not consistent. And by proposing this amendment, by adopting this amendment, we will have a definite definition of what is a public utility, and we can give more stability to the economy as well as our foreign investors or local investors in order for them to definitely be aware of what industries they are investing in. So if we have a definition that is in the law already, which is not in any other law, the Constitution does not provide for a definition of public utility, nor the Supreme Court has adopted different views, not different views, but different listings of what is public utility. But if we have a definite definition of what is a public utility, then our investment environment as well as our economy environment will be properly guided of what is a public utility, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Sponsor, have you read the case of Kida versus Senate of the Philippines? GR numbers 196271, 196305, 197221, 197280, 197282, 197392, 197454, February 28, 2012. Have you read the jurisprudence?
If the good interpreter can explain, cite the...
I just cited this. GR numbers 196271, et cetera, et cetera. It's dated February 28, 2012. It's all right if you have not read it.
With your indulgence, Mr. Speaker, the Secretary is reviewing the cited cases, Mr. Speaker.
But the Secretary yet will not be able to know whether or not you read it. You are the only one who can affirm whether or not you read this particular case, nobody else.
If the good interpreter can cite the provisions, Mr. Speaker?
I ask this, Mr. Speaker, because quoting the case of Duarte in that particular case, the Supreme Court held categorically, and I will quote this, "The legislature cannot bind a future legislature to a particular mode of appeal. It cannot declare in advance the intent of a subsequent legislature or the effect of subsequent legislation upon existing statutes. To reiterate, the Act of One Congress or legislature is not binding upon and cannot tie the hands of future legislators." Given this judicial pronouncement, Madam Sponsor, will it be fair to assume that the authors of the proposed bill failed to consider this decided case when they set out criteria that tied the hands of future members of Congress?
Mr. Speaker, like any other legal definitions, many of the laws that we have passed here and many of the jurisprudence that we have reviewed, there is always a definition does not tie down the decision of any future courts nor any Congresses. So it does not preclude the future Congress from redefining public utility, but until it is amended by a future Congress, should this amendment be accepted or be approved, then it stays, Mr. Speaker.
But to remind, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, the criteria was set in the particular section under the proposed bill. Is that not tying up the hands of the future Congress?
Sir Speaker, no. The criteria is a guide which future Congress can disregard should it decide to do so, Mr. Speaker.
The term "public utility," Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, is mentioned three times in Section 11, Article 12 of the Philippine Constitution. May we know, Mr. Speaker, if the good sponsor have come across the case of Endensa versus David, GR number L-6344 to 56, August 31, 1953, in attempting to define this term under the proposed bill?
What we have here, Mr. Speaker, is the 1953 decision of the Supreme Court on Luzon Stibidoring, Mr. Speaker. I'm not sure if we are...
Anyway, Mr. Speaker, I ask this because in this particular case, it was held that under the system of constitutional government, the Legislative Department is assigned the power to make and enact laws, the Executive Department is charged with execution or carrying out the provisions of said laws, but interpretation and application of said laws belong exclusively to the Judicial Department, and this authority to interpret and apply the laws extends to the Constitution. Does the good sponsor subscribe to this ruling, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
In fact, Mr. Speaker, this doctrine of separation of process, the doctrine of separation of powers, I should say, is basic to a lawyer like the good sponsor. Is it not so, Your Honor?
Sir Speaker, the judiciary can interpret the laws when the law is or the spirit of the law is unclear, but should we define public utility with the proposed amendment, then the definition is clear?
We will go to that, Mr. Speaker, but the most telling part of Endensa versus David is the admonition that the Act, I will quote this, "The Act of interpreting the Constitution or any part thereof by the legislature is an invasion of the well-defined and established province and jurisdiction of the judiciary, which was further reinforced by a citation in 11 American Jurisprudence 914 quoted as follows: "The rule is recognized elsewhere that the legislature cannot act declaratory or act declaratory of what the law was before its passage or to give it any binding weight with the courts. A legislative definition of a word used in a statute is not conclusive of its meaning as used elsewhere. Otherwise, the legislature would be usurping a judicial function in defining a term." Mr. Speaker, may we please ask if this judicial admonition is clear enough to the good sponsor?
Sir Speaker, the Supreme Court is correct in that sense, but we are not, we are, we have to take note that there is no definition of a public utility in the Constitution. In fact, in the different deliberations in the Constitutional Commission, we have derived the proposal of this amendment from such deliberations because there is the list, the list as stated in 1986, has been amended by the Supreme Court itself, by the subsequent jurisprudence that they have set, that they have decided upon after the 1986 Constitution, Mr. Speaker. So what is definite for us is the definition as intended by the Constitutional Commission of what is a public utility, but the list or the examples of what is a public utility has differed from 1986 or from 1956, 1986 and up to the present. This, the what has been included as public utility has changed over the years, but the definition has stayed consistent over the years, whether it be pre-1986 Constitution or after the 1986 Constitution, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, while admittedly, the Constitution did not define a public utility, but did the Constitution give authority to the legislature to make that definition?
Sir Speaker, as cited during the deliberation with Congressman Defensor, the intention of the said provision, or in fact, the whole Constitution, has not been a stringent or a strict interpretation of the Constitution. It has, the deliberations that he has cited is in fact to be liberal about the interpretation of the Constitution. But added to that, Mr. Speaker, a public utility, public utility, should we not define that? It would be subject to judicial interpretation in which we want, the proponents of this bill is to set what is the definition, so we have a definite definition of public utility and not just decide, not just leave it to the courts to decide what is a public utility, where in fact, there was no definition of public utility in the Constitution, Mr. Speaker.
That is correct, Mr. Speaker. It was left at that. It is for the Supreme Court to define it. It is not for the legislature to define it because the Constitution did not authorize the legislature, because that is the basic doctrine of separation of powers. Only the judiciary can make the interpretation. Madam Sponsor, did you have the opportunity of reading the separate concurring opinion of Justice Tigna in JG Summit Holdings versus Court of Appeals?
No, Mr. Speaker.
With the negative answer, Mr. Speaker, I think we can now forgive the good sponsor for defending the definition of public utility in the proposed bill. This is because in the separate concurring opinion, this was stated, and I will quote this, "A legislative declaration such as a definition by enumeration in the Public Service Act does not ipso facto render a business or service a public utility. For us, this court held in North Negro Sugar Company versus Hidalgo, whether or not one is a public utility is a matter of judicial, not legislative determination." That is quite clear enough, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, in fact, Supreme Court itself, despite such declaration, has been changing the list of what is public utility. It has not been consistent over the years. In JG Summit, it upheld the removal of shipyards, which is in the list of public services under the Commonwealth Act. And in the NPC versus Provincial Government of Bataan, it has decided that power generation is no longer considered a public utility operation.
That's not a problem, Mr. Speaker, you know, because that is their job, that's within their jurisdiction, they can do it. But as I can add, Mr. Speaker, the Supreme Court declared that an oil company is not a public utility. But, as I can add, Mr. Speaker, the Supreme Court declared that an oil company is not a public utility. Still in another case, the Supreme Court intimated that a wharf or dock within the meaning of Public Service Act is not necessarily a public utility. An operator of trucks who furnishes service under special agreements to carry particular persons and property was held to be not a public utility as he did not hold himself out to serve any and all persons. The test, according to the Supreme Court, in determining if a service is a public utility is whether the public may enjoy it by right or only by permission. Based on jurisprudence, Mr. Speaker, a shipyard, a marine ship, an irrigation system, or a broadcasting station are not public utilities. Even an ice plant, Mr. Speaker, although included in the definition of a public service under Act 2307 is not a public utility unless the ice it produces is directly sold to the public. Yes, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. The Supreme Court, the judiciary, has the business of doing that. They are the only ones who can define what enterprise is public utility, not the Legislature. During the interpolation of Representative Remulia, TSN Plenary Session November 6, 2019, you admitted, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, that under the proposed definition of a public utility, telecommunications, telephony, data highways, and transportation will all be excluded, thereby opening them to foreign investments and will not be subject to the 60 party constitutional limitations. Do you confirm this?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
When, Mr. Speaker, when the Legislature, under the no, the Supreme Court, under the case of Luzon Stevidoring, said, "The public policy of the state as announced by the Legislature will be given due weight." And in fact, when by a legislative, through a legislative act, the Congress has decided that the that the supply of energy, source of energy is not a public utility, then it was upheld, upheld by the Supreme Court. So, through the passage of the Epira Law, Mr. Speaker, it is, it is, it is not, we give due respect to the Supreme Court in the interpretation of the, of the, of the Constitution. But with this law, we are merely defining what is public utility, which has not been addressed by the, by the Constitution itself, but it has been addressed through the Constitutional Commission deliberations as well as some of the decisions of the Supreme Court. Hence, we have adopted or patterned some of the criterias after the decisions of Supreme Court and the Constitutional Commission in order for it not to be a judicial legislation, but for it to be clear that we, there's a delineation between a public service and a public utility, Mr. Speaker.
We already dealt with that, Madam Sponsor. What I'm asking you is that during the interpolation of Representative Remulia, under the proposed definition of public utility, you admitted that telecommunications, telephony, data highways, and transportation will all be excluded, thereby opening them to foreign investment and will not be subject to 60 party limitations. You said this, right?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And during the interpolation of Representative Subiri on October 2, 2019, as well as that of Representative Brosas a day earlier, you confirmed that telecommunications and transportation services can be now operated up to 100% ownership to foreigners, considering that these industries are not excluded in the proposed definition of public utility. Is this correct?
Mr. Speaker, with the proposal, telecommunications and transportation will qualify, will not qualify as public utility. Hence, they will be open to the, to foreign ownership more than the 40%, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, have you read the case of Tevez versus Gumboa? The citation is GR Number 176579, June 28, 2011.
Mr. Speaker, with the kind indulgence of the good interpreter, we are reviewing the jurisprudence.
Okay. I ask this, Mr. Speaker, because going back to the JG Summit Holdings for transportation and telecommunications were already included to have fallen under the statutory definition of public utility. In Tevez versus Gumboa, Mr. Speaker, the Supreme Court explained the citizenship requirement for operation of public utilities as follows. I will quote this. "The evident purpose of citizenship requirement is to prevent aliens from assuming control of public utilities, which may be inimical to the national interest. This specific provision explicitly reserves to Filipino citizens control of public utilities pursuant to an overriding economic goal of the 1987 Constitution, to conserve and develop our patrimony and ensure a self-reliant and independent national economy effectively controlled by Filipinos. With this direct and categorical policy to conserve and develop our patrimony to ensure a self-reliant and independent economy effectively controlled by us, will not the proposed measure violate such policy by virtually opening the gates to foreigners in fully controlling vital key industries like seaports, transportation, and telecommunications?"
Sir Speaker, based on the definition that we have proposed in the amendment, such industries as telecommunications, transportation, seaports, and airports do not qualify as public utilities because they are, they do not meet the four criteria that we have set in the proposed amendment. But I understand the concern of the good interpreter in terms of seaports and international airports because these are vital to our national security and national interest, Mr. Speaker. Should the good interpreter have any proposal in order to protect the interests of the Filipinos from foreign ownership or foreign manipulation, for that matter, Mr. Speaker, then we could seriously consider the proposal of the good interpreter, Mr. Speaker.
But earlier, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, when we cited the conditionalities that fit for the definition of what public utility is, you answered in the affirmative, meaning these conditions are all the parameters that can be used in order that an industry or an enterprise can be defined under a public utility.
Mr. Speaker, these industries, whether transportation or telecommunications, do not qualify as public utilities. The consequence of such is that they will be open to foreign ownership more than the 40% restriction under the Constitution. But, for example, under Section 17 of the Constitution, that the president, "In times of national emergency, when the public interest so requires, the state major in the emergency and under reasonable terms prescribed by it temporarily take over or direct the operation of any privately owned public utility or business affected with public interest." It does not preclude Congress from protecting industries that might affect public interest or public security, Mr. Speaker.
Earlier, Mr. Speaker, Madam Witness.
But they are not public utilities, Mr. Speaker.
But when we provided the conditions of a public utility like they are necessary for maintenance of life and occupation of the residents, they are necessary for the maintenance of life and occupation of the residents, they imply public use and service to the public, you already said, and in all these questions, you said, yes. Now, you're turning back to all those conditions and you're saying now that the transportation and telecommunications are not public utilities. So, it's very confusing, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. I am asking this question now and reiterating this to drive the point that if a transportation or a telecommunications company are now stripped of their character as public utility based on the enumeration advocated in the proposed measure, will this now have the effect of not requiring them anymore to obtain legislative franchise?
No, no, Mr. Speaker.
Why?
The qualification of a certain industry to be public utility or public services does not change their status or their obligations towards any administrative agency that have authority over it. So, for example, if CAB and CAAP are mandated or authorized to regulate air transportation, whether you are a Philippine national or a foreign national, you will still be subject to any franchise or authorization requirement by the CAB or CAAP, regardless of your nationality. Should you operate in the Philippines, you have the requirements of the authorization for a certain route or for landing rights will still be, will still apply because the authority of the Civil Aeronautics Board and Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines will still apply. In the same way that if ERC, should we, should we allow foreign ownership on electricity, ERC powers and functions will still apply whether you're a Filipino or non-Filipino. The authority or the powers and functions of the administrative agencies, whether Department of Energy, DICT, DNR, DOTR, ERC, and many others, will still be, will still apply. In fact, with some of the proposed amendments in this bill, it, the rules and regulations of the powers and functions of the administrative agency will be stronger and more updated to the current times because we are, we are changing an 80-year-old law, Mr. Speaker.
The key here, Mr. Speaker, is Article 11, Section 11, Article 12 of the Constitution, which says that no franchise, authority, and so on should be granted to a public utility. So, the key word here, the operative word, is public utility. If you are not a public utility, you cannot be given any franchise. So, if a transportation and telecommunications company is now excluded from a definition of the public utility, the only conclusion there, Mr. Speaker, is that they could already say, then we are no longer obligated to obtain legislative franchise because legislative franchises are given only to public utility. That is the simple reading of that constitutional provision.
Mr. Speaker, not all public franchises under the Albanian versus Reyes decision. Franchises issued by Congress are not required before each and every public utility may operate. Thus, the law has granted certain administrative agencies the power to grant licenses for or to authorize the operation of certain public utilities. Despite the fact that a certain industry is not a public utility, but our laws still apply. If, should LTFRB require a franchise or should ERC require a franchise, then that will still stay, Mr. Speaker. That does not change the obligations of the operators of this industry, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, this representation respectfully believes that by this interpolation, we have already rationalized several issues that might potentially violate the Constitution. Madam Sponsor, when, when you took your oath as a lawyer, one of the obligations you voluntarily imposed upon yourself was the solemn oath to support the Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines. In fact, when you took your oath before serving in this institution several times, you vowed to defend the Constitution of the Philippines. May I know, or may we know, how much do you value your oath, Madam Sponsor?
Sir Speaker, I do believe that we are not violating any constitutional provisions. We are defining public utility where there is ambiguity in the interpretation of the Supreme Court as well as by deriving the spirit of the Constitution from the Constitutional Commission deliberations. We have derived, we have crafted what is a definition of public utility that is not in contradiction to the intent of the Constitution, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this representation firmly believes that even in the heat of advocacy, each one of us should be loyal to the command of the Constitution and that at the end of the day, this contentious issue should be balanced in the interest of public good, in fullest obedience to the fundamental law. I thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 78. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Honorable Ace Barbers from the Municipality of Taganaan Surigao del Norte, headed by Mayor Cesar B. Diaz Jr., Vice Mayor Cesar A. Diaz Sr., Councilors Conrado A. Astronomo, Ryan Manugas, Marte Manubag, Vicente Beberino Jr., Nestor Soriano Jr., Jeffrey Benedicto, Wendeline Alipau, Maxwell Hussain, Roberto Di Agio, ABC President, Niko Toraja, SK Federation President, and the SB staff headed by Cristina Diaz, Rondaye John Buwal, and Maribeth R. Buiko.
To the guests of Representative Ace Barbers, mga Surigao noon, welcome to House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider House Resolution Number 568 and may we request the Secretary General to read the House Resolution. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Resolution Number 568, resolution congratulating the gold medal awardees of the 30th Southeast Asian Games and granting additional incentives from the leaders and members of the House of Representatives in the 18th Congress.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the House Resolution Number 568. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. The motion is approved. House Resolution 568 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 5528. House Bill Number 5528, Creating the Philippine Marshal Service from the Committees on Government Organization and Justice, to the Committee on Justice. House Resolution Number 360, Resolution calling for investigation in aid of legislation on the non-payment of real property tax of power plants under build, operate, and transfer with the local government unit of Quezon Province to the Committee on Ways and Means, to the Committee on Local Government. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of the referral of House Resolution Number 57 to the Committees on Good Government and Public Accountability and Energy. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend sessions for a minute.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill Number 4851 and thereafter, direct the Secretary General to read the title of the said measure and then after that, call the roll for nominal voting. So move.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and call for nominal voting thereafter.
House Bill Number 4851, Act Declaring May 18 of Every Year as National Higher Education Day, Royal Colab Members in Consideration of House Bill 4851. Abante, Abaya, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abwek Saldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hinaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amanti Matba, Amatong Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banjas Negrales, Barba, Barberas, Baronda, Barzaga, Pascog, Bautista, Bautista Bendiga, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Kagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Kaytano Alan Peter, Kaytano Maria La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wanko, Ko Yentes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipid, Dalog, Dasa de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duertete, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyes Ria, Farinyes Rudis Caesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis Flores, Fung Wan, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gayte, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Karin Janet, Karin Sharon, Gasta Taya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Go Edgo, Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Rosetta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera Di, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusos, Javier Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatim, Lietchon, Legarda, Lim, Lipkeychong, Lopez, Leola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Negrales Jerko, Negrales Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malañon, Waminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwano Disson, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiro Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Rivilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romolo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagar Barías, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos, Rektos, Sarmiento, Sauluk, Savillano, Chiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sensuats, Wansing Estrelitas, Wansing Horacio, Suarez, Aleta, Suarez, David, Sun Taisi, Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Lisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Tambut, Tehada, Teves, Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Chanco, Tolintina, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Bilia, Bilia Fuerte, Bilyanueva, Brother Eddie, Bilyanueva Noel, Biliar, Biliaras Suarez, Biliarica, Bylago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zamora Waikarat, Zarate, Zubiri.
With 167 members voting in the affirmative, House Bill Number 4851 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we'd just like to greet some guests on the gallery. These are your guests, the Honorable Deputy Speaker, Johnny Pimentel, Marisa Ayah, Judith Dedicatoria, Loida Godito, and Danisa J. Pacatan.
To my guests, Marisa Ayah, Judith Dedicatoria, Loida Godito, Danisa J. Pacatan, welcome to the House of Representatives. For clarification, there is no negative vote and zero abstention on House Bill 4851. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration the third reading of House Bill 4952, printed copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the Bill 4952 and thereafter, call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter, call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 4952, Act Declaring the Walling Walling Orchid as the National Orchids of the Philippines. Royal Colab Members in Consideration of House Bill 4952. Abante, Abaya, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abwek Saldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hinaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amanti Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banjas Negrales, Barba, Barberas, Baronda, Barzaga, Pascog, Bautista, Bautista Bendiga, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Kagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Kaytano Alan Peter, Kaytano Maria La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wanko, Ko Yentes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipid, Dalog, Dasa de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duertete, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino Estrella, Farinyes Ria, Farinyes Rudis Caesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis Flores, Fung Wan, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gayte, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Karin Janet, Karin Sharon, Gasta Taya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Go Edgo, Christopher Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Goroseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusos, Javier Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatim, Lietchon, Legarda, Lim, Lipkeychong, Lopez, Leola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadto, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Negrales Jerko, Negrales Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malañon, Waminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwanyobison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiro Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Rivilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedda, Romualdo, Romolo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagar Barías, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos, Rektos, Sarmiento, Sauluk, Savillano, Chiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sensuats, Wansing Estrelitas, Wansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Taisi, Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Lisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, An, Tan Tambut, Tehada, Teves, Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Chanco, Tolintina, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Valde, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Bilia, Bilia Fuerte, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Biliar, Biliaras Azuaras, Biliarica, Bylago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zamora Waikarat, Zarate, Zubiri.
With 169 members voting in the affirmative, none against, zero abstentions, the chair hereby declares House Bill Number 4952 as approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 4953, printed copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter, to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter, call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 4953, Act Declaring the Balangay as the National Vote of the Philippines. Royal Colab Members in Consideration of House Bill 4953. Abante, Abaya, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abwek Saldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hinaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amanti Matba, Amatong Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Parroyo, Atsensa, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banjas Negrales, Barba, Barberas, Baronda, Barzaga, Pascog, Bautista, Bautista Bendiga, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Kagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Kaytano Alan Peter, Kaytano Ma Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wanko, Ko Yentes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipid, Dalog, Dasa de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duertete, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino Estrella, Farinyes Ria, Farinyes Rudis Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis Flores, Fung Wan, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gayte, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Karin Janet, Karin Sharon, Gasta Taya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Go Edgo, Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Goroseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusos, Javier Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatim, Lietchon, Legarda, Lim, Lipkeychong, Lopez, Leola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadto, Marcoleta, Mariano, Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Negrales Jerko, Negrales Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malañon, Waminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwanyobison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiro Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Rivilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedda, Romualdo, Romolo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagar Barías, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Sauluk, Savillano, Chiao, Silverio, Singson Jose, Singson Mian, Sensuats, Wansing Estrelitas, Wansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Taisi, Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Elisa Siena, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, An, Tan Tambut, Tehada, Teves, Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Chanco, Tolintina, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Bilia, Bilia Fuerte, Bilyanueva Eduardo, Bilyanueva Noel, Biliar, Biliaras Azuaras, Biliarica, Bylago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zamora Waikarat, Zarate, Zubiri.
With 170 members voting in the affirmative, none against and zero abstention, the chair declares House Bill Number 4953 as approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 5070. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter, to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter, call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 5070, Act Providing for Free Freight Services in the Transportation of Relief Goods in Calamity-Stricken Areas. Royal Colab Members in Consideration of House Bill Number 5070. Abante, Abaya, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abwek Saldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hinaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amanti Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banjas Negrales, Barba, Barberas, Baronda, Barzaga, Pascog, Bautista, Bautista Bendiga, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Kagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Kaytano Alan Peter, Kaytano Maria La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wanko, Ko Yentes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagook, Dalipid, Dalog, Dasa de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duertete, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino Estrella, Farinyes Ria, Farinyes Rudis Caesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis Flores, Fung Wan, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gayte, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Karin Janet, Karin Sharon, Gasta Taya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Go Edgo, Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Rosetta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jarezco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusos, Javier Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatim, Lietchon, Legarda, Lim, Lipkeychong, Lopez, Leola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadto, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Negrales Jerko, Negrales Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malañon, Waminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwano Disson, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiro Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Rivilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedda, Marie, Romualdes Romolo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagar Barías, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Sauluk, Savillano, Chiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sensuats, Wansing Estrelitas, Wansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez, David, Sun Taisi, Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Lisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Tambut, Tehada, Teves, Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Chanco, Tolintina, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Bilia, Bilia Fuerte, Bilyanueva Brother Eddie, Bilyanueva Noel, Biliar, Biliaras Azuaras, Bilyanova, Bilyanova, Suarez, Bilyanica, Bylago,
Villanueva Noel Villiar Villiar Azuzuaras Villarica Bilago Yap Eric Yap Victor Yu Zamora Ronaldo Zamora Waikarat Sarate Subiri
With one hundred seventy members voting in the affirmative, none against, and zero abstentions, the chair declares House Bill Number 5070 as approved on third
That the Secretary General be directed to read the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 5490 anak renewing for another twenty-five years the franchise granted to Vehicle Broadcasting Systems Incorporated under Republic Act Number 8092 entitled An Act Granting the Vehicle Broadcasting Systems Incorporated, a franchise to establish, operate, and maintain commercial radio and television broadcasting stations in Region 5. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 5490. Abante Abaya Bilyanosa Abu Abog Saldivar Abunda Ako Pakosta Akosta Alba Djong Advinkula Agabas Agarau Aglipay Aginaldo Albano Albario Alonte Alvarez Franz Alvarez Henaro Alvarez Pantalyon Amanti Matba Amatong Andaya Angara Aragones Abison Arenas Parroyo Atienza Aumentado Babasa Bagating Balindong Banyas Nograles Barba Barber's Baronda Barzaga Basco Bautista Bendigan Belmonte Benitez Bernos Piason Biliones Biron Bolilia Bundok Bordado Bravo Brosas Bulut Bustos Kabatbat Kabuchan Kabredo Cagas Calderon Calixto Caminero Campos Kanama Kawagdan Kari Castelo Castro Franz Castro Pedenil Kaytano Alan Peter Kaytano Maria La Arne Celeste Chatto Chipeco Chungalaw Ko Angelika Ko Elizalde Ko Juanco Culyantes Crisologo Kuak Kuaresma Cueva Culyamat Nagok Delipi Dalok Daza De Jesus De Venecia Defensor Lawrence Defensor Michael Delmar De Los Santos De Los Montalia Dimapuro Abdullah Dimapuro Mohamed Khalid Duabit Duhalid DoTerte Dipaustino Ino Dipaustino Michael Dipaustino Ian Paul Ebcas Ecleo Ilago Inverga Irise Ericel Ermita Buain Scuderes Spina Espina Estrella Farines Ria Farines Rudis Cesar Fernandez Fernando Ferrer Juliet Ferrer Luis Flores Hongwan Fortun Fortunof Frasco Fentebilia Gayte Garbin Garcia Jose Enrique Garcia Pablo Chan Garcia Vincent Garen Garin Sharon Gastaig Chalian Gato Heron Go Ed Gomar Gonzaga Gonzalez Aurelo Gonzalez Neptali Gonzalez Carlo Gorseta Giko Gulyas Guya Jaresco Hataman Hernandez Herrera Di Hofer Alusos Javier Jimenez Coelisa Co Wilton Konghun Labad Labad Laxon Laxon Noel Lagman Lagun Lara Lazatin Yechon Ligardan Lim Lim Kaitchong Lopez Loyola Losotan Makapagalaroy Maseda Madrona Malapitan Mangawang Magudadato Marcoleta Mariano Hernandez Mariño Marquez Martinez Matba Matugas Mendoza Momon Natibidad Naganyo Nava Nieto Noel Nograles Jerco Nograles Juan Fidel Nolasco Nuyes Malanyon Waminal Olivares Ong Jose Ong Roni Ortega Wanyudison Pacquiao Alberto Pacquiao Rogelio Patiernas Pat Duano Palma Pancho Panotes Peña Pichay Pimentel Pineda Plaza Puno Kimbo Radasa Ramirozato Ramos Remulia Revilia Reyes Rivera Robes Rodriguez Roman Romero Romualdes Ferdinand Romualdes Sieda Marie Romaldo Romolo Roques Actalan Sagarbaryas Akaluran Salceda Salimbango Salo Sanchez San Copan Santos Recko Sarmiento Saulo Sabillano Xiau Silvera Singzon Singzon Miyan Singzua Swansing Estrelletas Swansing Horacio Suarez Saleta Suarez David Suntaysi Alberta Duran Talyado Tambunting Tan Aliza Tan Angelina Tan Samir Tan Sheri Tan Tambotiada Tevez Arnolfo Tevez Jose Chanco Tolintino Torres Gomez Tulpo Tupas Tututor Ti Alan Ti Diego Umali Alfonso Umalimari Victoria Unavia Ungab Uy Juliet Uy Rolando Valeriano Valmayor Vargas Vargas Alfonso Velasco Veloso Vergara Villia Villia Fuerte Villanueva Brother Ed Villanueva Noel Villiar Villiar Azuzuaras Villarica Bilago Yap Eric Yap Victor Yu Zamora Ronaldo Zamora Waikarat Sarate Subiri
With one hundred seventy members voting in the affirmative, none against, zero abstentions, the chair declares House Bill Number 5490 as approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 1477, printed copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair is none. Motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 1477 anak upgrading the Caraga Regional Hospital in Barangay, Washington, Surigao City, Surigao del Norte into a tertiary-level hospital, increasing its bed capacity from one hundred fifty to five hundred beds and operating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 1477. Abante Abaya Bilyanosa Abu Abog Saldivar Abunda Ako Pakosta Akosta Alba Djong Advinkula Agabas Agarau Aglipay Aginaldo Albano Albario Alonte Alonte Alvarez Franz Alvarez Henaro Alvarez Pantalyon Amanti Matba Amatong Andaya Angara Aragones Abison Arenas Parroyo Atienza Aumentado Babasa Bagating Balindong Banyas Nograles Barba Barber's Baronda Barzaga Basco Bautista Bautista Bendigan Belmonte Benitez Bernos Piason Biliones Biron Bolilia Bundok Bordado Bravo Brosas Bulut Bustos Kabatbat Kabuchan Kabredo Cagas Calderon Calixto Caminero Campos Kanama Kawagdan Kari Castelo Castro Franz Castro Pedenil Kaytano Alan Peter Kaytano Maria La Arne Celeste Chatto Chipeco Chungalaw Ko Angelika Ko Elizalde Ko Juanco Culyantes Crisologo Kuak Kuaresma Cueva Culyamat Nagok Delipi Dalok Daza De Jesus De Venecia Defensor Lawrence Defensor Michael Delmar De Los Santos De Los Montalia Dimapuro Abdullah Dimapuro Mohamed Khalid Duabit Duhalid DoTerte Dipaustino Ino Dipaustino Michael Di Ian Paul Ebcas Ecleo Ilago Inverga Irise Ericel Ermita Buain Scuderes Spina Espina Estrella Farines Ria Farines Rudis Cesar Fernandez Fernando Ferrer Juliet Ferrer Luis Flores Hongwan Fortun Fortunof Frasco Fentebilia Gayte Garbin Garcia Jose Enrique Garcia Pablo Chan Garcia Vincent Garin Janet Garin Sharon Gastaig Chalian Gato Heron Go Ed Gomar Gonzaga Gonzalez Aurelia Gonzalez Neptali Gonzalez Carlo Gorseta Giko Gulyas Guya Jaresco Hataman Hernandez Herrera Di Hofer Alusos Javier Jimenez Coelisa Co Wilton Konghun Labad Labad Laxon Laxon Noel Lagman Lagun Lara Lazatin Yechon Ligardan Lim Lim Kaitchong Lopez Loyola Losotan Makapagalaroy Maseda Madrona Malapitan Mangawang Mangodato Marcoleta Mariano Hernandez Mariño Marquez Martinez Matba Matugas Mendoza Momon Natibidad Naganyo Nava Nieto Noel Nograles Jerco Nograles Juan Nolasco Nuyes Malanyon Waminal Olivares Ong Jose Ong Roni Ortega Wanyudison Pacquiao Alberto Pacquiao Rogelio Patiernas Pat Duano Palma Pancho Panotes Peña Pichay Pimentel Pineda Plaza Puno Kimbo Radasa Ramirozato Ramos Remulia Revilia Reyes Rivera Robes Rodriguez Roman Romero Romualdes Ferdinand Romualdes Sieda Romaldo Romolo Romolo Roques Actalan Sagarbaryas Akaluran Salceda Salimbango Salo Sanchez San Copan Santos Recko Sarmiento Saulo Sabillano Xiau Silvera Singzon Singzon Miyan Singzua Swansing Estrelletas Swansing Horacio Suarez Saleta Suarez David Suntaysi Alberta Duran Talyado Tambunting Tan Aliza Tan Angelina Tan Samir Tan Sheri Tan Tambotiada Tevez Arnolfo Tevez Jose Chanco Tolintino Torres Gomez Tulpo Tupas Tututor Ti Alan Ti Diego Umali Alfonso Umalimari Victoria Unavia Ungab Uy Juliet Uy Rolando Valeriano Valmayor Vargas Vargas Alfonso Velasco Veloso Vergara Villia Villia Fuerte Villanueva Eduardo Villanueva Noel Villiar Villiar Azuzuaras Villarica Bilago Yap Eric Yap Victor Yu Zamora Ronaldo Zamora Waikarat Sarate Subiri Kabatbat Kabuchan Kabredo Cagas Calderon Calixto Caminero Campos Kanama Kawagdan Kari Castelo Castro Franz Castro Pedenil Kaytano Alan Peter Kaytano Maria La Arne Celeste Chatto Chipeco Chungalaw Ko Angelika Ko Elizalde Ko Juanco Culyantes Crisologo Kuak Kuaresma Cueva Culyamat Nagok Delipi Dalok Daza De Jesus De Venecia Defensor Lawrence Defensor Michael Delmar De Los Santos De Los Montalia Dimapuro Abdullah Dimapuro Mohamed Khalid Duabit Duhalid DoTerte Dipaustino Ino Dipaustino Michael Di Ian Paul Ebcas Ecleo Ilago Inverga Irise Ericel Ermita Buain Scuderes Spina Espina Estrella Farines Ria Farines Rudis Cesar Fernandez Fernando Ferrer Juliet Ferrer Luis Flores Hongwan Fortun Fortunof Frasco Fentebilia Gayte Garbin Garcia Jose Enrique Garcia Pablo Chan Garcia Vincent Garin Janet Garin Sharon Gastaig Chalian Gato Heron Go Ed Gomar Gonzaga Gonzalez Aurelo Gonzalez Neptali Gonzalez Carlo Gorseta Giko Gulyas Guya Jaresco Hataman Hernandez Herrera Di Hofer Alusos Javier Jimenez Coelisa Co Wilton Konghun Labad Labad Laxon Laxon Noel Lagman Lagun Lara Lazatin Yechon Ligardan Lim Lim Kaitchong Lopez Loyola Losotan Makapagalaroy Maseda Madrona Malapitan Mangawang Mangodato Marcoleta Mariano Hernandez Mariño Marquez Martinez Matma Matugas Mendoza Momon Natibidad Naganyo Nava Nieto Noel Nograles Jerco Nograles Juan Fidel Nolasco Nuyes Malanyon Waminal Olivares Ong Jose Ong Roni Ortega Wanyudison Pacquiao Alberto Pacquiao Rogelio Patiernas Pat Duano Palma Pancho Panotes Peña Pichay Pimentel Pineda Plaza Puno Kimbo Radasa Ramirozato Ramos Remulia Revilia Reyes Rivera Robes Rodriguez Roman Romero Romero Romualdes Ferdinand Romualdes Sieda Romaldo Romolo Roques Actalan Sagarbaryas Akaluran Salceda Salimbango Salo Sanchez San Copan Santos Recko Sarmiento Saulo Sabillano Xiau Silvera Singzon Singzon Miyan Singzua Swansing Estrelletas Swansing Horacio Suarez Saleta Suarez David Suntaysi Alberta Duran Talyado Tambunting Tan Aliza Tan Angelina Tan Samir Tan Sheri Ann Tan Tambotiada Tevez Arnolfo Tevez Jose Chanco Tolintino Torres Gomez Tulpo Tupas Tututor Ti Alan Ti Diego Umali Alfonso Umalimari Victoria Unavia Ungab Uy Juliet Uy Rolando Valeriano Valmayor Vargas Vargas Alfonso Velasco Veloso Vergara Villia Villia Fuerte Villanueva Eduardo Villanueva Noel Villiar Villiar Azuzuaras Villarica Bilago Yap Eric Yap Victor Yu Zamora Ronaldo Zamora Waikarat Sarate Subiri
With one hundred seventy-two members voting in the affirmative, none against, zero abstentions, the chair declares House Bill Number 5491 as approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading House Bill Number 5568 and thereafter ask the Secretary General to read the title of the said measure and call the roll for nominal voting. So move.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 5568 anak creating a barangay to be known as barangay Kinhalinan in municipality of Barobo province of Surigao del Sur. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 5568. Abante Abaya Bilyanosa Abu Abog Saldivar Abunda Ako Pakosta Akosta Alba Djong Advinkula Agabas Agarau Aglipay Aginaldo Albano Albario Alonte Alvarez Franz Alvarez Henaro Alvarez Pantalyon Amanti Matba Amatong Andaya Angara Aragones Abison Arenas Parroyo Atienza Aumentado Babasa Bagating Balindong Banyas Nograles Barba Barber's Baronda Barzaga Basco Bautista Bautista Bendigan Belmonte Benitez Bernos Piason Biliones Biron Bolilia Bundok Bordado Bravo Brosas Bulut Bustos Kabatbat Kabuchan Kabredo Cagas Calderon Calixto Caminero Campos Kanama Kawagdan Kari Castelo Castro Franz Castro Pedenil Kaytano Alan Peter Kaytano Maria La Arne Celeste Chatto Chipeco Chungalaw Ko Angelika Ko Elizalde Ko Juanco Culyantes Crisologo Kuak Kuaresma Cueva Culyamat Nagok Delipi Dalok Daza De Jesus De Venecia Defensor Lawrence Defensor Michael Delmar De Los Santos De Los Montalia Dimapuro Abdullah Dimapuro Mohamed Khalid Duabit Duhalid DoTerte Dipaustino Ino Dipaustino Michael Di Ian Paul Ebcas Ecleo Ilago Inverga Irise Ericel Ermita Buain Scuderes Spina Espina Estrella Farines Ria Farines Rudis Cesar Fernandez Fernando Ferrer Juliet Ferrer Luis Flores Hongwan Fortun Fortunof Frasco Fentebilia Gayte Garbin Garcia Jose Enrique Garcia Pablo Chan Garcia Vincent Garin Janet Garin Sharon Gastaig Chalian Gato Heron Go Ed Gomar Gonzaga Gonzalez Aurelo Gonzalez Neptali Gonzalez Carlo Gorseta Giko Gulyas Guya Jaresco Hataman Hernandez Herrera Di Hofer Alusos Javier Jimenez Coelisa Co Wilton Konghun Labad Labad Laxon Laxon Noel Lagman Lagun Lara Lazatin Yechon Ligardan Lim Lim Kaitchong Lopez Loyola Losotan Makapagalaroy Maseda Madrona Malapitan Mangawang Mangodato Marcoleta Mariano Hernandez Mariño Marquez Martinez Matma Matugas Mendoza Momon Natibidad Naganyo Nava Nieto Noel Nograles Jerco Nograles Juan Fidel Nolasco Nuyes Malanyon Waminal Olivares Ong Jose Ong Roni Ortega Wanyudison Pacquiao Alberto Pacquiao Rogelio Patiernas Pat Duano Palma Pancho Panotes Peña Pichay Pimentel Pineda Plaza Puno Kimbo Radasa Ramirozato Ramos Remulia Revilia Reyes Rivera Robes Rodriguez Roman Romero Romualdes Ferdinand Romualdes Sieda Romaldo Romolo Roques Actalan Sagarbaryas Akaluran Salceda Salimbango Salo Sanchez San Copan Santos Recko Sarmiento Saulo Sabillano Xiau Silvera Singzon Singzon Miyan Singzua Swansing Estrelletas Swansing Horacio Suarez Saleta Suarez David Suntaysi Alberta Duran Talyado Tambunting Tan Aliza Tan Angelina Tan Samir Tan Sheri Ann Tan Tambotiada Tevez Arnolfo Tabas Jose Chanco Tolintino Torres Gomez Tulpo Tupas Tututor Ti Alan Ti Diego Umali Alfonso Umalimari Victoria Unavia Ungab Uy Juliet Uy Rolando Valeriano Valmayor Vargas Vargas Alfonso Velasco Veloso Vergara Villia Villia Fuerte Villanueva Eduardo Villanueva Noel Villiar Villiar Azuzuaras Villarica Bilago Yap Eric Yap Victor Yu Zamora Ronaldo Zamora Waikarat Sarate Subiri
Mr. Speaker.
With one hundred seventy-two votes, negative zero, abstentions zero, House Bill Number 5568 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move with direct the Secretary General to transmit immediately to the Senate the bill's approved on third reading. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Secretary General.
Mr. Speaker, we are receipt of a extra reference business for the day. Therefore, I move that we now proceed with the extra reference of the business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and the resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read additional reference of business.
Additional reference of business resolutions. House Resolution Number 569. Resolution calling for the conduct legislative inquiry in aid of legislation on the provision of water services by the Metropolitan Water Works and Sewage System and its concession agreements with Manila Water Company and Manila Water Services for the protection of public interest in the name of good governance by Representative Suarez David.
To the committee and rules.
House Resolution 570. Resolution expressing the profound sympathy and sincere condolence of the House of Representatives on the death of Honorable Milagrosa Titan, Governor of Samar from 2001 to 2010 and 2019, former representative of the second district of the province of Samar from 2010 to 2019 by Representative Kaytano Alan Peter, Romualdes Ferdinand, and Abante.
Committee and rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of a certificate of proclamation issued by the Commission on Elections proclaiming Coalition of Association of Senior Citizens of the Philippines as winner in the party list elections on May 13, 2019, and to entitle its nominee, Mr. Francisco G. Dattol Jr., to sit as its representative to the House of Representatives of the Congress of the Philippines. Mr. Speaker, pursuant to the aforementioned certificate of proclamation, I move that we allow Mr. Francisco G. Dattol Jr., representative of the party list Coalition of the Association of Senior Citizens in the Philippines Incorporated, to take his oath in open session.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to call the representative of party list senior citizens to take his oath as op- take his oath of office before this body.
Congressman Francisco G. Dattol Jr. is requested to join Deputy Speaker Marco Letta at the Ross Room to take his oath of office.
May I request all the members of the House of Representatives and all guests in the gallery to please rise to witness the oath-taking of our new member. Hi, state your name and address.
I, Francisco Gamboa Dattol Jr., of Quezon City.
Having been elected, state your position and party list.
Having been elected as representative Coalition of Association of Senior Citizens of the Philippines Incorporated, Senior Citizens Party List.
Hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear. Hereby solemnly swear-
That I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability-
That I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability-
The duties of my present position-
The duties of my present position-
And of all others I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
And of all others I may thereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees-
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees-
Promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
Promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I will im- I impose this obligation upon myself-
And that I impose the obligation upon myself-
Voluntarily-
Voluntarily-
Without mental reservation-
Without mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Session is still suspended to allow the newly, uh, the new member of this body to be greeted by his colleagues. Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 570, and for this purpose, may we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 570. Resolution expressing the profound sympathy and sincere condolence of the House of Representatives on the death of Honorable Milagrosa Titan, Governor of Samar, former representative of the second district of the province of Samar.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 570 in consideration of the House Resolution Number 560. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. House Resolution Number 560 is hereby adopted. And 570. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend for one minute. I so move.
Session suspended. Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, I move we suspend sessions until 1:00 p.m. on Monday, December 9. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended-
1:00 p.m.
Until 1:00 p.m. of December 9.